The Clear Lake City Council of Monday, November 7th, 2022 shall come to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dana, seconded by Mike. We approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. To the consent agenda, you have a copy of the minutes of October 17th, 2022. We need approval of the bills and claims, of which you also have a copy. And we have zero licenses and permits. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
So.
Second.
By Mike, seconded by Mark. That we approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Now is the time and place for any person, citizen in the audience who wishes to address the council on any issue or concern that is not on the agenda. Please approach the podium, state your name first, and last, give your address, so the clerk can properly enter the minutes. This is not a discussion time, nor a question and answer time, and you have approximately three to five minutes. Not appearing will move on to unfinished business, of which tonight we have two items, a rezoning proposal and floodplain ordinance amendment, and these are for the third and final readings on each of these ordinances. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 873, an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Clear Lake, Iowa, to rezone certain property from RS5, which is low-density, single-family residential, to RS8, which is medium-density, single-family residential. Motion, please, on the third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dana, seconded by Mike, that we approve ordinance number 873. Is there any discussion? Roll call. Mark?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
And Dana?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five, zero. An ordinance number 873 is duly adopted. And now, the third reading of the floodplain ordinance amendment, an ordinance which to amend the floodplain ordinance to the city of Clear Lake, Iowa. This is on the third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Bennett, seconded by Gary, that we approve ordinance number 874. Is there any discussion? We'll call Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Mark?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five, zero, and ordinance number 874 is duly adopted. Six, new business, 6A, Lake Time Residential Subdivision, 2605 South Shore Drive, intro and recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Florrie, welcome, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just run through the items here in the packet with you and give you background information on this one. Owners of 2605 South Shore Drive, AKK Investment Properties of 2636 Briggs Wood Road in Webster City, filed a preliminary plat with the city to develop a seven-and-a-half-acre parcel of property located on South Shore Drive, near State Park, in between South Lakeview Drive and South Shore Drive. Proposal is to develop a 24-lot residential subdivision with two outlots. Outlot one would be for the detention pond, and outlot two is a pedestrian access between the subdivision and South Lakeview Drive. Of course, the property you just had tonight, the final reading of the rezoning ordinance to change the zoning classification from RS5, which is low-density, single-family residential, to RS8, medium-density, single-family residential. So that will be published in the newspaper Thursday, and then that process will be completed on the change in zoning. And of course, that was done to enable the construction of twin homes in the development, along with single-family development as well. So, the plat was reviewed by the City Planning and Zoning Commission at the November 1st meeting. Commission has forwarded, and you have a copy of that in your packet, its letter of recommendation that the plat be approved by the city council. The owners and developer have indicated their desire to start the rough grading on the project sometime about the middle of next week, with the goal being to have foundations in place before the winter on four of the twin home lots, specifically lots 1 and 2, and 21 and 22, which are on the east side of the development towards the intersection with South Shore Drive. Also included in the packet is a proposed development agreement with the owners to offset some of the costs associated with the development of the subdivision. Specifically, what the city would be doing here is similar to what we've done with many other subdivisions, where we would participate in purchasing of pipe materials, such as storm sewer, mainline pipe material, water mainline pipe material, and sanitary sewer, mainline pipe material. We do have an estimated cost on that, based on today's market conditions, so it's about $110,000. So, we've put a conservative value in the development agreement, not to exceed city participation of $150,000, but that will be more fleshed out when it gets closer to time to actually purchase that pipe material. Do see the market coming down on the prices there, so that's good news. Again, under this scenario, the city would purchase the pipe material upfront, and the developer would then sign a promissory note as part of the development agreement. You got a copy of that in the packet here tonight, to ensure the faithful performance in developing the subdivision. Additionally, the city would propose to engage Planscape Partners to prepare an urban revitalization plan. We've used them before in a couple of other cases to do urban revitalization plans for the city. Purpose of the plan would be to provide a partial abatement from property taxes for the future purchasers of the homes in the development. They would be restricted to qualify to owner-occupied, so not rental properties. They have to be owner-occupied in order to qualify. And under this proposal, similar to what we had done with Pine Brook subdivision a few years back, that would be eligible for an abatement of 100% on the first $75,000 in assessed valuation. In the Pine Brook scenario, that equated to about $950 worth of property tax relief per year for five years. So, somewhere around $5,000 over the course cumulatively of a five-year period. So, and as I mentioned, you know, we had the one in Pine Brook, we have the one currently out in the Glen Oaks subdivision. We put a couple others together, one in the Northland Class area of downtown, one also on South 15th Street there. So, we've done four or five of these different urban revitalization plans, and the abatement schedule is really determined based on the plan itself and the finding, whether it's either economic development or blight determines what kind of schedule you can have. So, in this case, much like we had with Pine Brook, the finding for the plan will be based on economic development. You can have a little more aggressive schedule under a blight finding, but obviously with just an undeveloped pasture here, we're not going to be able to designate that under Iowa code provisions for blight. So, it'll be, so it'll be an economic development finding there. So, just to kind of walk through some of the items here in the, in the packet with you. Again, I mentioned the first gold sheet there is the letter from the Planning and Zoning Commission that indicates that they reviewed the proposed Lake Time Residential Subdivision at their meeting on November 1st, and have forwarded their recommendation that the subdivision be approved by the council. The backside of that next gold sheet is a resolution to your consideration tonight, approving the preliminary plat for the Lake Time addition. The next page is just an aerial overview of the location, sort of a vicinity map that identifies the project location in terms of where it is in the community. And then just a couple more pages, and the project engineer, Wayne Scholdfeld, is here this evening. So, he'll go over kind of the engineering aspects of the plat in terms of how it's laid out, street dimensions, and turning movements, and all those kinds of things that are relevant from an engineering perspective here in just a moment. The next page after the gold sheets, some of you have seen this in meetings with the developer, just an elevation of what the proposed twin home would look like on those different lots in the subdivision. Then on the backside of that is, again, just a colored version of that. Following that is a floor plan for the twin homes themselves. So, the green sheet that follows that is a resolution authorizing economic development forgivable loan agreement with the private developers in connection with the development of the Lake Time Residential Subdivision. Again, as I mentioned, the blue sheets are the actual forgivable loan agreement. As I mentioned, it describes the participation, as I described earlier, where we would participate in the purchasing of the water main material, the sewer main material, and storm sewer main material. So, lays all of that out. Again, it's premised on the basis that the developer would have the public improvements ready to be accepted by the city by May 31st of 2023. And upon that completion date, then the city would forgive the principal amount of the forgivable loan agreement to the developer. So, it's going to be probably in that $110,000 to $120,000 range. So, once the infrastructure is in and the development's accepted by the city, then that, that loan would be forgiven in its entirety. Continuing on in the blue sheets are the Exhibit C is the promissory note that would be entered into between the city and the owners of the project, indicating again that if, for whatever reason, the city purchased the pipe material and the subdivision didn't happen, that they would reimburse the city for our costs of buying the pipe material. And of course, then they would, they would keep the pipe material. The pink sheet in your packet is the proposal from Planscape Architects, indicating the proposed fee of $2,900 to prepare the 26th Avenue South Urban Revitalization Plan for the development. I don't have anything further in terms of any background information before Mr. Scholdfeld gives a review of the plat itself, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know that's a lot of material on the development agreement or property tax. I might just mention on the property tax abatement schedule, kind of run through that just briefly with you in terms of what a schedule like would look like. So, let's say, for example, the assessed value of the property, one of the homes was $350,000. So, how this works is, you've got that figure as the base to start, $350,000 of assessed value. So, don't confuse that with taxable, assessed value. So, then what this provision of the code provides for is a reduction from the assessed value of $75,000. It's a reduction off of that base assessed value. So, if it's 350, then you deduct the 7, $75,000, so you're down to $275,000 as the revised assessed value. So, in Clear Lake, well, in, say, Iowa, the rollback on residential property is roughly 56%. So, then you multiply that times 56%, you're down to about $154,000 of assessed valuation. Again, don't confuse it with taxable, assessed. So, assessed valuation, at this point, we're still talking about, or at that point, we're talking about taxable. So, then reduce that by the homestead, which is about $4,000. So, now you're down to a taxable value of about $150,000. So, by the time you take, again, the reduction of the $75,000 of assessed value, multiply that times the rollback, 56% to get to the taxable value, then, then reduce it by the homestead. So, again, ultimately, in that scenario, you're down to a taxable value of about $150,000. So, then divide that by 1,000, multiply that times the consolidated tax rate of about $27 per 1,000. So, you arrive generally at about a $4,000 property tax bill. Under the scenario without the urban revitalization tax abatement incentive there, the, the tax bill on that's about $5,200. So, in that scenario, you'd be looking at about, oh, $1,200, there are about annual property tax savings for each year for five years. So, so over the course of five years, about $6,000. So, that's, anybody have any questions on that?
Council, any questions?
Can you do that voodoo math on my house?
Yours is assessed too high.
Very little question about that.
Thanks, Scott. Now, review of proposed preliminary plat. Wayne Scholdfeld, with Scholdfeld Engineering. Welcome, Wayne.
Thank you. Evening, Council. A pleasure being here. What, Scott did a really good job as far as giving a brief primer for what we're doing. I brought two of the larger sheets that's in your packet. They are sheets three, three and five, kind of the meat and potatoes of the project itself. And I'll try to keep this brief. I think you've been running this very clean and professionally, so I'd like to keep it brief, and then maybe go back if you have any questions, if we need to highlight anything additionally. I think everybody's familiar with the project where it's at. As again, a seven-and-a-half acres. It, what we'll be doing is, because of the kind of the odd shape, we're obviously putting a cul-de-sac in. The sanitary sewer comes from the west and from South Lakeview Drive, and will go up through easements into the cul-de-sac itself and down the right way through the property. Water main likewise will come from the west and actually loop back to the east. It will also be in the water main easements through that outlot two, as with the sanitary, and then up through some side yard easements into the cul-de-sac, eventually tie back into South Shore Drive. So, the storm sewer itself will essentially be down at the very end of the cul-de-sac. The, the center, which is outlot one, center of that will be retention basin. It will be also used to improve the clarity of the water before discharges. Right now, as you may or may not know, the overall land slopes topography-wise, east to west, and predominantly to the, actually southwest, as it drains out into the Rickon property to the south. And it drains into the creek and eventually to the, to the lake itself. So, we're very close to the lake. So, we're obviously putting a retention basin in to satisfy your stormwater runoff, but also looking at it to slow down the water and mitigate any type of additional sedimentation that we can take off, or try to take that off before it hits the lake itself. There is a storm sewer, I'm going to say right up front, bisects the property. It's a little hard to see. Storm sewer is line that comes diagonally. Those engineers like us, drawing, so it's a little hard to see. But that is an existing storm sewer that city staff was able to get to us. We did do some survey work on it, but it's a little bit, weren't able to get it fully designed by the time these, these plats came to be. But it will be relocated, storm sewer or the inlet placed increase at a capacity of the north end, relocated through property lines, and essentially brought back to the origination of the discharge down on the south end. The storm sewer from the project itself will also discharge down that, that area. Two sets of inletts will dump into the pond and then discharge to the south. I think it kind of shows up. If I had larger prints, we'd rather have them. But the discharge line from the storm sewer pond itself is between 14 and lots, 14 and 15. So, that's where the storm sewer will go. So, a couple things of note beyond just those, the pipe design itself is the design of the street. What we're doing is, we're asking to have a modified right-of-way be adopted for this project itself. On sheet five, you can see on the upper sheet itself, upper part of the sheet, what we're asking for is a modified right-of-way of 60-foot, assimilated right-of-way of 60 feet. An actual 50-foot right-of-way be placed in there, an additional five-foot either side of an easement. So, you get the 60-foot of right-of-way, which is very typical for a lot of, lot of street, streets of this capacity. What this allows, because if you look at lots, again, right on the neck, you can see those are very, on the east end, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, and then 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22. The depth of those are very limited, and that's just because we just don't have the property in there. We come from the backside of those lots along the north there, in 26. And of course, we butt up against, have a conservation property to the south. So, we're very limited on the neck of the cul-de-sac itself. So, what we've opted to do is ask you to allow us to make a modified right-of-way. With the, with the easements, what that allows us to do is have the setback generated from the 50-foot right-of-way. Your, your, your space is still there for all the utilities, all the paving sidewalks, as they show there. Utilities and everything will fit within that 60-foot right-of-way. But it allows us to bring those houses in a little closer, and allows us really to develop some nice-looking homes in there, but on a narrow depth and a wider frontage. So, trying to be creative with this very odd piece of land. Lost a little sleep trying to figure out a few of these items. But I think we got a workable solution in that if you have, don't have an issue with it, like the PNZ didn't have. The other item we're doing because of that outlot one, retention basin, is splitting the traffic movement into one ways around the cul-de-sac, which, as we know, cul-de-sacs are essentially one-way. It's just that we have concrete in the middle. Everybody drives around the outside and loops back around. So, we're doing that and having two 15-foot lanes. Travel lane is 12-foot standard. We're going 15. And asking for no parking in all those areas, so we're not going to congest any of those areas. We also ran, and it's on your sheet, four, yeah, four, the, right in the middle, upper middle, right below the name, is, what we did was a truck turning movement path through that area. We, with, working with Jason, your city engineer, we looked at what vehicle to use. It's actually what we call an S bus 4D design. That is, approximates a larger school bus, approximates a tandem truck with a snowplow, and also a fire engine, double-axle fire engine. And we had more than enough room to turn that around without jumping over the curbs. We actually gave a little bit of fluff, I would say, engineering term, highly sounding engineering term, for the fact that when we drive into the cul-de-sac, we're actually have a little more space on the right-hand side. And as we drive through at the very peak of the cul-de-sac, we have room for the interior, so we're not jumping the curb at any point when that truck movement goes through there. So, that is one part of the uniqueness of the cul-de-sac, has, integrates the pond actually in the center. The center of the cul-de-sac itself goes for one-way turning movements, or one-way travel, traffic movement around that, which is, like I said, not unusual. Some of the issues that came up with the PNZ that we're making sure we address is, one item was that storm sewer that was, that diagonal, goes diagonally across the lots. We weren't able to find any type of easement in our, in our paperwork for the land. Neither did Dave. I asked him after the meeting. So, we'll accommodate where we have to be by easement. So, we'll provide easement for that. We're going to take care of that. So, once it gets within the easements, you'll now have a good way of maintaining that for the future. The other items that were really brought out were how we drain the property to the south itself. And on the sheet five, again, lower portion of that, we show a couple items. One towards, not quite on the bottom, says pond overflow ditch detail. We wanted to make sure that when we, when the pond dis, we designed the pond for a limited amount of water. And at some point, it could, could overtop the banks. When it overtops the banks, we want to make sure it's handled correctly. So, what we're providing for is a side yard easement, in this case, between 14 and 15, where the district, if the pond were to overtop, it overtops down to grass waterway, not in someone's basement or in their garage. So, that highlights how there'd be a depression between those two lots in that area. And then, as you look at the very bottom, the other item that came up with was that there was some concern from Dave and, you know, staff even, is that how we handle the south lot line, so to speak, the southwest of the lot line with Dave, and that the water runoff off the back of the houses, you know, is accommodated into appropriately-designed swale, which will divert it into kind of laterally along our property line into the ditch that is, now takes the water. That is where the discharge pipe from the retention pond goes. That'll divert it along the property line, rather than running it straight down into the south boundary, across the south boundary. There was some asking, questions about whether, how the offset was with 27th to the south, and we're just limited, obviously very limited, in what we can do with the property. If we shift a lot, if we shift the street north to try to accommodate some type of, to meet the city code, then we lose lots and actually create a problem with the lot to the north, or the street to the north. Shifted to the south, and we still can't meet it physically as far as that goes. So, we're kind of stuck in between there. We're not comfortable, but we are, obviously, as a cul-de-sac, it's a very limited amount of prop, limited amount of discharge traffic-wise onto South Lake or South Lakeview. So, it drives, yep. So, and also, that's, I think that's 25 miles an hour, if I remember right, vehicular speed. So, we're not discharging onto a high-volume or a high-speed street there. What I handed out was also some restrictive covenants, and I just highlighted some ones that typically get asked, kind of, see those about, that we talk about on the first page, the square footages. Obviously, we have substantial homes in here that are going in there, which protects you, your base, yet allows the developer to do what they need to do. Down the very bottom, that question always comes up, about those items about the mobile homes. We have that distinctly being eliminated. Top page two is, won't be pre-erected dwellings, you know, nothing moved in, so to speak. Sometimes the developer will develop it out and then put a, allow to bring in a farmhouse, and that kind of ruins the mood of everything. Double attached, double attached garages are required. Buildings will be done within 12 months. All homes will be built by a recognized home builder. The other item, because of the previous development, we want to make very clear what we're doing here. No recreational vehicle camper, et cetera, will be parked on a lot for a period exceeding 48 hours. So, makes, making sure that there's a distinct difference from the previous ideas we had. Recognize the, the neighbors for the fact that they're used to more of a, or used to the pasture that's out there. We want to make sure that our outdoor lights don't trespass, do a full cutout for the dark sky style of light fixtures, so we're not flooding everybody's backyard with additional light. And then, just the following page is the association maintains the storm water. And those are just kind of highlights. Obviously, have any questions on any of those? Am I going fast enough, too fast, or you have questions, or you want more?
Wait, I was just going to point out, one of the other items that the PNZ commission was the length of the cul-de-sac. So, this is a little bit longer than the typical, what the code specifies for that. So, I just wanted to point out, it's a little bit longer than what the code calls for.
Correct. Yours, I think, calls were 750, if I remember right. And we're obviously over top, over that. But it's, to get it developed into there, we're asking to have that waived for this, because it's just pretty hard not to get a project in there. Oh, the, the other item I wanted to discuss, and then Scott brought it up briefly, is that that outlot two was meant as an outlot because we don't know what's going to be left after we get sanitary sewers and water main in there. Obviously, the next step after this is, you know, full project plan development, so that we can have your staff and everybody approve those. So, you're, as I said, the PNZ, we're still on the leash here. Still in very much control as far as that goes. But outlot two, we kept it as an outlot because there's two, we know we're kind of cutting it up with the two sanitary and water main easements that go. it up with the two sanitary and water main easements that go through there. One of the other items that we're adding to that, going kind of back to the original layout, is that we're providing for a recreational trail to be brought to there. So get these people down into, towards the lake, everybody wants to go there anyways, so it makes sense to have that easement-type form.
Any questions, counsel?
I've got a quick one. I'm hiding here in plain sight. When you get old, that's easy to do. Anyway, I, and maybe it's covered in point number one here, but one of my, I don't even know how to put this without getting myself in trouble, but one of my concerns in Clearlake is the ever-expanding short-term rental. And is there a covenant in here that precludes that?
Yeah, it's AA.
Yep. If you turn to the fourth page, down the, towards the bottom, actually, I forgot to highlight that one. I did it last time. It was a letter AA, right above number seven, rendering it a residential structure.
I, I see it now. I tried to read through it quickly, but somehow missed that. Anyway, I, it, it just seems to be a growth industry in Clearlake, and I'm sure if, if an individual bought one of these properties, they wouldn't necessarily want to be dealing with that, so thank you for pointing that out.
Betcha.
Counsel, any other questions? Or Mr. Schott, help?
I was just going to point out that Wayne had mentioned the right-of-way width. Typically, what we see is a sixty-six-foot right-of-way, but in this case, it's a sixty-foot, but, fifty-foot, but then we've got a five-foot easement on either side of that, so it makes it a sixty-foot. So, so we will have sidewalks on both sides of the street going in. So, so just want to point out that even though the right-of-way is a little bit narrower than what we customarily have for, for subdivisions, we're, we're pretty close. It's the difference between sixty-six and sixty, but we're getting, getting the extra five foot on each side to accommodate the sidewalks and utility easements and things like that. So effectively, pretty, pretty close.
All the franchises have been contacted, and they have no problem in either being in the backyards or front yards, easements, so they're all very conducive.
Just one other stupid question. Being a longtime teacher, the Lake Time with two K's kind of threw me. I couldn't resist bringing that up.
Even as an engineer, you know, we don't spell very well, but that caught me for a while, too.
Okay, well, anyway. I'll, I'll be quiet now.
That, that obviously comes from the three partners' names, A-K and K, so I guess being creative.
I figured there was a real clever explanation, but I hadn't heard it yet.
I guess the only other item was that we talked about the street names.
Yep.
And we threw this out here, you know, as far as this, and I think there's been other names, so we're completely open to whatever you'd like to have this name done.
In that, in that retention pond, is, is there an aerator in there?
No, it will be, and I don't want to, I described it as a dry pond. It, it will be fluctuation. It'll have a, it'll be drained down during or after rain events, so it'll be a dry bottom. But during rain events, obviously, it's going to surge to three, three heavy deep. So it will not be a static water table there. It will always be drained down. So we did, that is one change. I think that was earlier discussed, I'm not sure if you knew about it, is that one time it was going to be an aerated pond, be both decorative and functional, but now we're just going back to the functionality of the retention basin.
And I would, I would just comment, I think as the progress continues to move forward on this, the issues related to the stormwater, in particular, the concern from one of the adjacent property owners, you know, we'll just have to continue to work and develop the city and the developer and owners, the best stormwater management strategies to, to try to mitigate that stormwater as we possibly can. I'd just point out, you know, we've done lots and lots and lots of subdivisions here in my time, and almost none of them are ever perfect from the beginning. And if we waited until every T was properly crossed and I properly dotted, they just wouldn't happen. So you kind of work on those things concurrently as the, as progress goes on with the subdivision. I mean, I'm thinking of one here in particular, up on the highway very recently. We had drainage district, DOT, and all these things. If we waited until every approval was blessed by someone, it's, it's literally done now. I can assure you, we probably would maybe be breaking ground today. But you just, you just can't wait until you get every single T crossed and I dotted on some of these things, or it just, it'll, it'll stop the entire process. Now, what we can just say again is, like we have with all the other subdivisions and developers and owners, work as a city in partnership with them to help find the right strategies to, to control those issues and those concerns.
We've been, just, I've been really impressed with being able to work with Mike and Bullock Works, you know, as far as getting this information and working with us. So we're going to be hand-in-hand, working with them, making sure that what we're doing is best for the city and its citizens, so.
Wayne, I got, excuse me, a little curiosity. Will Lot Ten have some kind of an easement or a path running through that lot to be able to get to Outlet Two, to get to the lake or walk to the beach, or?
Yeah, let's see, it'll be along that same, if you look at the note right above Lot Ten, or the number ten, it would be along the easement incorporated at the easement between Lots Ten and Eleven, where we show a sanitary sewer. As far as they, Lot Ten would do, they could jump on that, on that side.
So basically, Dana, that shows, if you, it's hard to see, I apologize for the small packet on it, but it says recreational trail easement, so Lot Ten is serving both as a fifteen-foot sanitary sewer easement, but overland, it would be a recreation trail easement, so it's kind of a dual-purpose easement.
Counsel, any other questions or comments from Wayne? Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Before I open the public hearing, I just, counsel, make note that we will, upon completion of the, of the public hearing, closing of the public hearing, we will, in fact, discuss this among ourselves. Now is the time and place for the public hearing with regard to Lake Time Residential Subdivision at two-six-zero-five South Shore Drive. There's anyone in the audience that wishes to address that subdivision? Please approach the podium, state your name first and last, and give your address, so the clerk can properly enter in the minutes. Welcome, Chad.
Good, good evening, Mayor, counsel. Chad Tuck, North Howard Corridor, Economic Development, Mason City, nine North Federal, Federal Avenue. I think I got it. But no, as we've said before, we really appreciate the city's work on this project. Appreciate Ridge Development, Mr. Ridge, for their candor, coming and meeting with the city and with us and various partners, working through the process, being very transparent, putting together, I think, a really strong plan for an important piece of property in the community that also helps to meet a significant housing need for our businesses, for our residents, for those that would like to be residents of Clearlake. And I know that we've said it many times, but just that workforce housing, that, that housing that hits that target demographic of our employees, our teachers, our nurses, our police officers, fire department, you name it, you know, these are the kind of homes that we've just struggled with building, and especially in the current climate with inflation and everything else going on. I, I really appreciate what they can bring to the table with quality homes at an attainable price for our workforce and our median wages in this county. So I, I just think this is a critical need for our community. I think that the process the city's undertaken has been just phenomenal, as always. Like Scott said, nothing's ever perfect, and you work through those things, and this, this community does a better job of that than most. And, and as we've said many times, you find that community, and I'd, I'd be the first one I saw, so I appreciate the efforts here, and again, the team from Ridge Development. I've, I've had the chance to talk to several other economic developers, partners of ours, colleagues, that have had them work in their communities, just incredibly positive things to, to say, and, and I think that will, there'll be a big value add to our community to have them here. So thanks again for your consideration of this. I think that, again, the incentives and the opportunity to assess in that are appropriate as well. I know this public hearing doesn't cover that, but I think you guys are handling this right. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks, Chad. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the council? Before I close that, we have one written, and I think most of you have received a copy of this, but perhaps not. Dave Ricken at twenty-seven-twenty South Lakeview Drive has submitted written comment expressing concern regarding the flow of drainage onto his property as an adjacent property owner, and I believe Wayne addressed that in his presentation, so just want that to be noted. Jennifer, thank you for doing that. All right, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So offered.
Second.
By Mike, seconded by Mark, that we close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same. Motion carries. And now, discussion and consideration of the motion of which we are about to take action upon, which will be Resolution twenty-two seventy-seven and seventy-eight. I have a few comments first, and then I'll open it up to the rest, but these were, have been seven and a half, shall we say, rather interesting acres, at least the use of these acres. And it's gone through a number of trials and almost, if we can use the word tribulations. It, however, it has almost come full circle to what we, as council members and as city administrators, et cetera, department heads, many times, practically every time, we don't look at wants, but we look at needs. And if there's a need in this community, it's a need for housing. And I think that's why we have focused on this seven and a half acres for so long with so many different, shall we say, ideas of what need is. I liked the way when Mr. Brian Ridge came through on this and called us at, I believe, the recommendation of what we now call, what is it, AKK Group out of, out of Webster City. And he brought that to our attention. He called us, we met with him. He then, in turn, which really impressed me, organized and met with the property owners in that area. I happened to be here at that meeting, and I thought that was very, very well handled. They got to see what was going to go up there, how it was going to go up there, you know, pictures of the various homes and twin homes, and I don't think anything was left unturned, including tonight. I thought it was very, very well presented. Presented then to PNC for their approval. I thought they did a nice job of discussion there, and, you know, just tonight with the flow of the drainage answering this written concern that we got from Mr. Ricken. So, my opinion, well done. I do believe we are headed in the, in the great, in the good direction now of the housing need. This is a start, and I'm sure it will continue on. It's a great town to live in, as we all know, and this is a good addition to it. Mark, what say you?
No, I echo your statements, Mayor. And that is an interesting property, to say the least. I know, assuming water issues are resolved, because that does drain to the lake, I think this is a great project and looking forward to some more houses in Clearlake.
Thanks, Mike.
Nelson brought up a little history that I've been sitting here for a while, and at one point, we had Fletka, Fury, Scout, and Mr. Ed, the four horses of the apocalypse, hanging out there for quite some time. And I think we even went through some legal action on, on our horse friends. But anyway, that's long in the past. Many times, things that we get involved with seem to move at a glacial pace because they have to, I guess. But thanks to you gentlemen and Scott, and I imagine there were some others. I, I got to sit in on a couple of meetings with Mr. Ridge, and very impressed with everything that came our way. This thing has not moved at a glacial pace, it's moved at kind of a hurricane speed, which is very important because it's going to help fill a need. So thanks to everyone. Good job.
Gary?
Yeah, this project is definitely filling a need that we needed down here. I'm impressed with Ridge and what's been said. Scott brought up a very good point, though. We've got to keep working at it. Not everything's perfect. We'll get it right, but let's get going and get her going.
Thanks, Bennett.
Yes, Mayor, I would just add to these comments. Again, I think it's a very positive project for Clearlake. Furthermore, I think that location is an ideal place for additional kind of tuck-in housing as you've developed it. So greatly appreciate the investment in Clearlake and for you guys being here tonight, so thank you.
Thanks, Dana.
Well, I think it's a great idea. I appreciate your putting this together for us to see in detail, because sometimes there's questions that don't get answered, and to be able to go through the packet and look at it in a detailed form is definitely much of a benefit for us, and so we appreciate that. Looking forward to seeing some dirt fly.
Thanks, Dana. Thanks, counsel. Now entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two seventy-seven, which is a resolution approving preliminary plat for the Lake Time Addition subdivision. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. By Bennett, seconded by Gary, that we approve Resolution twenty-two seventy-seven. Is there any discussion? We'll call Gary.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Dana.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
And Mike.
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero. Resolution twenty-two seventy-seven is duly adopted. Now entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two seventy-eight, a resolution authorizing economic development forgivable loan agreement with certain private developers in connection with the development of the Lake Time Residential Subdivision. Motion, please.
So offered.
Second.
Moved by Mike, seconded by Gary, that we approve Resolution twenty-two seventy-eight. Is there any discussion? We'll call Bennett.
Yes.
Dana.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
And Gary.
Yes.
Motion carries, and Resolution twenty-two seventy-eight is duly adopted. And now entertain a motion to approve professional services agreement with Planscape Partners for the urban revitalization plan. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Dana, seconded by Mark, that we approve the professional services agreement with Planscape Partners. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. Appreciate everybody's input on number six A tonight. And now, we'll jump to six B, Clearlake Consolidated Urban Renewal Plan Amendment. Review, Mr. Flor.
Thanks, Mayor, counsel. Take a quick look at some of the items in the packet here. The yellow sheets there in your packet is resolution to approve the urban renewal plan amendment for the Clearlake Consolidated Urban Renewal Area. And on, continuing on a little bit deeper in that is an actual copy of the urban renewal plan amendment itself dated November of 2022. If you recall back, at your October third regular council meeting, the council had set the date for the public hearing on the proposal to amend the Clearlake Consolidated Urban Renewal Plan to add and incorporate some new projects, some new initiatives into the plan that were the result, come out of the Surf District Visioning Plan, a destination Iowa project grant application. So we're getting this done now in order to be able to maximize our ability to capture available tax increment revenues that would be available to us, and we need to do that prior to December first. So that'll be coming up here at one of the council meetings here in the future to certify that debt to the county auditor. Again, has to be done prior to December first. So the new items, again, we've covered.
Thanks, guys.
I know we've covered this two or three times already, but just once again, the new items to be added to the plan include professional service agreements related to the planning services, engineering services, legal services, and financial services, as well as administrative costs, and reimbursement to developer for costs associated with the demolition of the twenty-one-room Hilltop Motel, including asbestos abatement, site preparation, and so forth. Again, the council, at the meeting on the twenty-first, will then consider an internal advance resolution. Basically, that establishes the debt necessary for purposes of making a certification to the county for tip revenue collection, and will also consider a development agreement with the developer of that project, again, on the November twenty-first meeting. So, so again, tonight is just the hearing on the proposal to amend the urban renewal plan to incorporate those additional. those additional projects and initiatives that I mentioned. Yet to come, so probably the next meeting will be the internal advance and the development agreement. Total value of those projects and initiatives I mentioned add, equal about $390,000 in terms of cost to our urban renewal plan for projects. So, we anticipate that demolition would take place after December of this year, but may probably go into January, just depends on the developer and their subcontractor and their schedule. But we anticipate either December or January for the demolition and site work on the Hilltop Motel property. In the interim, again, we're probably going to see that utilized as off-street parking for the Surf Ballroom. Again, the statutorily required consultation hearing, that's required, of course, under Iowa code, that we have that. We held that with the other taxing entities of the county. That was done on October 21, 10 o'clock here at City Hall. And of course, we have to publish notice on the newspaper on our proposal to amend the urban renewal plan. So, that was published in the Clear Lake Mirror Reporter on October 27. So, I don't have anything further on that proposal unless anyone has any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you, Scott. Now is the time and place, if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to address the Clear Lake Consolidated Urban Renewal Plan Amendment that Scott just addressed, please approach the podium, state your name first and last, and give your address so the clerk can properly enter in the minutes. None appearing, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
By Mark, seconded by Mike, that we close the public hearing with the guard that clearly consolidated urban renewal plan amendment. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same? Motion carries. Now entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2279, which is a resolution to approve the Urban Renewal Plan Amendment for the Clear Lake Consolidated Urban Renewal Area.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Dana, that we approve Resolution 2279. Is there any discussion? Roll call, Dana?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And Bennett?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, and Resolution 2279 is duly adopted. Six C, 1100 Block of Main Avenue, Stormwater Improvement Project. Enter Mr. Flor.
Thanks, again, Mayor. The gray sheets in your packet kick this one off. It's a proposal from McKinnis Excavating to install about 150 linear feet of 15-inch RCP storm sewer pipe. And this is sort of in conjunction with the Main Avenue Street Reconstruction Project. It's in the 1100 Block area. So, behind the gray sheets, you've got a vicinity map that shows the location of what we're talking about. So, on the Main Avenue Street Reconstruction Project, we extended storm sewer pipe from basically the north side of the street to the south right-of-way line there in that area that's kind of circled in the red. So, it's stubbed in underneath the pavement, again, behind the sidewalk there in that, in that location. It's generally, and then on the backside, you can see a little bit more of a closer-up version, but it's located between 1013 Main and 1100 Main. So, that's where the new storm sewer would tie into the outlet that we constructed previously, and then run to the back alley there that goes east and west. So, again, we'll kind of refer to this as the 1100 Block of Main Avenue Storm Sewer Improvement Project, in roughly 150 feet, linear feet of 15-inch RCP pipe. The alley has been, I know some of you are familiar with this location. It's in between South 10th Street and South 12th Street. Very poor drainage for a long, long time. And there's been some instances, I know the mayor and I have been down there, and some times where we've had some really, really heavy rains, and you're about knee-deep in water in this alley. There's just nowhere for it to go. You know, it just kind of naturally drains into the ground and out of there, but takes a long, long time for that to happen. So, this has really been a need for probably a long time. You know, the opportunity just wasn't there to do it as a standalone project. But, you know, we had some, Jeremy and Jason had some conversations with McKinnis, who's the underground excavator for the Main Avenue project. And he had some pipe material left on the site, the 15-inch storm sewer pipe, that he was going to have to relocate back to Mason City. So, Jeremy and Jason kind of negotiated out the project with Mr. McKinnis, and just worked out that we got even more favorable pricing to do this project now than what we got in terms of unit prices on the Main Avenue Street Reconstruction Project. So, good, good, very, very opportune occasion for us to be able to do that. So, scheduled, the contractor would like to begin work on this as soon as the council would approve it. So, probably here yet this week. Get started on it. There is a tree that has to be taken out of there. So, as I mentioned, the cost is just under $13,000, so $12,975. We did obtain, there was a couple easements from those adjacent property owners that we had to obtain in order to do the project, but we were able to obtain those. So, just worked out to be, I think, a really, really good, favorable time to do something like this. So, again, capitalizing on the contractor being there, mobilized, and having excess materials available there that didn't really want to relocate back to Mason City. So, I think we got a good, good price for this. So, I don't know if anyone has any questions there, but be happy to answer those.
No question, but a definite comment. This is a win-win-win-win. Couple of the neighbors that live along that alley have commented to me on occasion of heavy rain that there is actually a place for the water to go out of the alley in their backyard, and quite some depth there, too. So, they're going to be thrilled. Just a little context for those in the room. When I was a youngster, the house along that alley that is now our rental unit was Ellis Wick's Grocery Store. So, at that point in time, we had many neighborhood groceries. And it was a great candy stop and bubblegum baseball card stop for the kids from First Avenue North at that point. So, you didn't need to know that, but it's here.
Did you put them in the spokes of your bicycle wheel, so?
Yeah, just, just the bad teams, of course. No Detroit Tigers, of course.
Stole the clothesline, what are they called?
Clothes bins.
Snappers to put his cards in the.
Oh, yeah, you had to get those off somebody's clothesline and clip them on the spokes, and away you went.
That was really good, wasn't it?
We got to liven these things up some way, and I do the best I can. I get a grin out of Creighton every once in a while. So, that's kind of my measuring stick here.
He still knew, he hasn't heard all these stories a bunch of times.
I think that was a new one.
That was a new one.
No, Ellis Wick then later.
That was a new one.
Later bought the Clear Lake cottages, just in case you missed that area, too.
Well, I can confess, that's the first time I've known him for about 18 years. That's the first time I've heard that one.
Anything else from Scott? Thanks, Scott. Jeremy?
Review of proposal.
Mayor, Council, thanks. Scott pretty much described the project. So, just to review the proposal quickly, McKinnis proposed 149 linear feet, 15-inch storm sewer. Obviously, they're going to use RCP that they have here on site already, a 30-inch intake. And then, they will remove the stump and dispose of it during the excavation. And then, as landscaping, they'll just regrade the soils on the project and reseed with fertilizer mulch, dormant seeding this fall. And speaking with McKinnis, they, like Scott had said, they will, if they get the go-ahead tonight, they will probably have equipment on the ground tomorrow and begin work. So, they got everything here that they need and would like to get moving, get it done. Be a pretty quick project for them, actually. So, so, yeah. Lump sum price for the entire project, $12,975. Like I said, they would start as soon as, soon as they can. If you see the map there, you guys are probably all familiar with the location. And like Scott said, we met the two homeowners. Both of them are very, very eager to get the easements and get this done, and solve this issue. Once it's done, we'll also be able to probably make a few more improvements to that alley, just on grading, keep the water away from some of the driveways, and kind of the alley approach on the, on the west end would need a little bit of care, too. But as of right now, it doesn't really do us any good till we get that fixed.
Is this, is this right, that the, well, must be, it's on here. You've got nine ton of aggregate surface there, so that's six inches thick. And it looks like it's about 12 by 12 there. That, that will suffice, then?
Yeah, so, I'd have to, so they would be, because it goes right through kind of an existing portion of the back alley, when they excavate and return, that would be pretty much just that portion, yeah. That, it'll probably have a pretty good sub base. They'll be able to replace that and then put a new roadstone in there at the end.
You know, not to top, Mike, but that, if you look at those old maps, that was a marsh area years ago, too. So, it's been wet from time to memorial, really.
I think a couple of property owners have little French drains back there, and when it rains hard, I know the one individual runs a sump yard pump, just as First Avenue to keep his yard clean right now, so.
The timing of getting this done is perfect, really, right while we're doing that. As Mike has said before, we have to get that done if we got something big going on, which we do have. Any other questions for Jer? Thanks, Jeremy. Therefore, I entertain a motion to approve proposal from McKinnis Excavating in the amount of $12,975 with regard to the 1100 Block of Main Avenue Stormwater Improvement Project. Motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Dana, seconded by Gary, that we approve the proposal from McKinnis Excavating. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Six D, purchase of forestry drum mulcher. Review once again, Jeremy Cornberg.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Yeah, so forestry drum mulcher, we've, as far, part of the budget season, we had budgeted for a brush cutter this year. We budgeted $10,000 for a brush cutter. In doing some research and prepping for that, we were, we came across a drum mulcher, which does what a brush cutter can do, but much more. So, we, you know, did our, do some demoing, research. We determined that a drum mulcher would probably fit our needs much better than just a brush cutter, and the fact that it does allow us to do a variety of chores rather than just the brush cutter. So, this drum mulcher, you can see the, the images of it there. It's kind of, it's a pretty heavy-duty piece of machinery. It would go on the front of the skid loader that we purchased recently, a year or so ago. It would allow us to grab ditches, grind stumps, anything from, you know, voluntary trees that are growing out of ditches, fence lines, all the way up to, we've actually, in our demo process, have been able to grind stumps, you know, up to about 24 inches or more. It just, it's designed to take down trees and stuff up to nine inches pretty easily. With working through this, we can get up to, I mean, we've done pretty large stumps. It just takes a little bit more time and care. You just can't really hog into it. You just got to do it in layers. But it does a really good job. We can get about six, eight inches below, below grade with this one, which means that's typically what a, a tree guy is going, when they grind a stump, they're going to get, try to get that eight inches. So, we're getting about to that point. When we are removing trees, you know, we can spend anywhere from $200 to $400 for a tree stump. It just depends on the size and whatnot. So, there's some significant savings there. We actually started today because McKinnis got some stuff moved, grubbing that tree line out at Everybody Plays Playground. I talked to Navertill. A job like that, to grub that entire tree line, he would have bid out at $5,000 to $6,000 just to do. So, it opens up a lot of those opportunities for us to do some of that work ourselves, and significant cost savings to the city for something like that. So, in our, in our due diligence, we demoed a diamond mower brush cutter, which is the one you see here. And we also demoed one from Star Equipment. It was a Fenko Bush Hog brand. This one just fit our machine better, operated better. And it was also, as you can see from the bid summary, it was the least, least costly. So, we did get bids from four different vendors. Murphy Tractor, which is the diamond mower, SK drum mulcher, was $29,000. The other one from Star Equipment was the Fecan Bull Hog, and they were $36,000. So, our recommendation, just based on the variety of uses, potential savings in future work, would be to go ahead with the, the piece of equipment from Murphy Tractor, the diamond mowers, the SK drum mulcher. So, as you can see there, I also included some pictures of some areas that we've done in our demonstration to clean up some areas. So, any questions for me?
So, this go in front of the Bobcat, then? Is that?
Yeah, right in front of the John Deere that we just bought last year, so.
This is, this is, kind of fulfills one of my, that I've had a person for a number of years now complain about. I don't even know what the name of the road is. North of town, Scott, it's gravel road that goes east and west from.
270th.
Was that?
270th.
You've got it.
Yeah.
Reading my mind here. But, you know, that, that never, that never, our, our side of the road, our side of the road, the other side is county.
Yep.
Never gets really done or done correctly. And when it is done, it, I would assume, would take you about a week to do it with guys and so on.
Yeah, we've already done a large portion of our side out there. So, I think the second group of pictures is.
Yeah, right.
Is ours, so.
And then you take, we've got country now, where, you know, it's been added on. You've got 27th out there.
Yep.
That needs to be done. That goes all the way to Baker's Road. You come back in across East Main out there by the, across the creek there.
Yep.
And then, North 32nd.
One of the things that you don't see is that what this allowed also in those country areas is when you do grub those ditches like that, is the snow capacity increases majorly during the, during the winters. So, your drifting should be reduced quite a bit. You know, you're going to be able to have that extra capacity during the winter. Helps us out in that, in that faction, too, so.
Yeah, so long as it gets good use, I think it's well worth the money. Comments, Council? Questions?
Hi, Noah Farmer out on 31st Street, that I think you've helped out a little out there. And, I mean, you just made him happier than a rat in a corn crib, and this thing will just enhance that. So, there you go.
Getting late here.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Jeremy, I can't top that, but I will say, on 27th, it's made a significant difference. So, as the mayor said, I think it'd be a very good, good investment for us. So, thank you.
Any other comments?
No, let's move on.
All right. Entertain a motion to approve purchase of a forestry drum mulcher from Murphy Tractor and Equipment in the amount of $29,000. Motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Mike, that we approve the purchase forestry drum mulcher. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Thanks, Jeremy. Employee leave voluntary donation program. Review of proposal. Creighton Schmidt, Director of Finance and Ministry of Services. Welcome, Creighton.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the green sheet, last sheet of the packet here. This voluntary leave donation program really allows eligible employees to volunteer vacation leave to another eligible employee that has exhausted their paid leave, and they're facing a loss of income as a result of a serious medical illness, injury, or disability. So, really, this policy has arisen because we've had a couple employees who've been in this situation, where some, they've had a catastrophic event, and they've used up all of their paid leave, and, of course, facing that loss of income. And actually, on the positive side, it wasn't necessarily those employees who were coming and asking for this, but there were other employees of the city who came to us and wanted to donate because they knew the situation was going on. So, very positive from our employees there. And they have kind of pushed this policy forward. So, really, if someone's in that situation, this would allow other employees to donate their vacation time to kind of fill in that gap. So, the policy in green outlines all the policy rules and regulations. So, the policy in green outlines, um, all the policy, uh, rules and regulations there, um, but excited to be able to offer this benefit.
Any questions? Council, questions for Creighton? Creighton, therefore, entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two eighty, a resolution establishing an employee leave donation program. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dana, seconded by, who we got, Mike, that we approve Resolution twenty-two eighty, is there any discussion?
I, just one quick comment, I, I think this is a neat deal, uh, you know, we're, we're a culture that doesn't always look out for other people, and for, um, you know, an employee to come forward and suggest this, and then us to have the opportunity to act on it, I think is just a, a wonderful situation, so, thank you.
Well said, Mike. Any other comments? Therefore, entertain a motion, I've done this, haven't I? Let's move on to Chief, please.
Oh, we better go.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes. Gary.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Dana.
Yes.
Motion carries, five-zero, Resolution twenty-two eighty is duly adopted. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, just have a couple items to discuss, uh, we did have a successful trick-or-treat night, uh, no issues to my knowledge of any issues in the construction areas, I know we had several around town that we were kind of concerned about. Uh, November eleventh, Friday, is dispatcher Nikki Page's last day with the city, um, she is leaving to take another professional opportunity with the State Patrol, we're very excited for her, very sad for us, um, she's worked with the PD, with the city for over fifteen years, so, we do wish her well, and, uh, we'll miss her institutional knowledge, but we're, again, excited for her, new opportunity. Uh, we did post the open dispatch position, that does close on November fourteenth. Um, just an update on, uh, our newest police officers, our two, uh, previously certified officers who came to us over the summer, Officer Smith and Coburn, are very close to completing their field training, they are on their own, they are getting evaluated kind of on a regular basis, but they're on call, they're taking calls by themselves and on shifts. Uh, Officer Lind, who graduated from the academy in, in August, is still kind of in that FTO stage with a partner trainer, and he's on track, hopefully, in the next couple months to be certified for Solar Patrol himself. Uh, Officer Paige Conklin is in Week eleven of sixteen at the academy, and, uh, she's on schedule to graduate on December sixteenth, so we're very excited to get her back. Um, Jeremy and I, at some point, he doesn't know this yet, but Jeremy and I will be meeting with the Chamber here very quickly to coordinate, uh, Christmas by the Lake, which is gonna be right around the corner, and, uh, we are finishing up with our October numbers, so we can get that to you by the next, next council. Not as glamorous as a mulcher, but it doesn't cost any money, so. You have any questions, I'll be having to answer them.
Chief. Thanks, Chief, appreciate it. Jeremy, Public Works?
Mayor, Council, uh, just a quick, uh, update on Main Avenue, uh, the crews are gonna be on site tomorrow morning to begin paving the north side, uh, the last section, so they'll be going, like, from twelfth to, to eighth. Uh, we'll, we'll be putting the traffic light at eighth at Main at four-way flash, so that ready-mix trucks will be able to get in and out, and then, there will be a bit of a, uh, traffic issue when the paver gets to eighth, because they will have to come out on the eighth and then get it returned back in, but, um, shouldn't be an issue, I don't think we'll be able to, uh, work through that. Also, on Main Avenue, they will be doing, uh, the winter mulching this week, as well as finishing up a, a light or two, I think there was one base that they had to reset, maybe a second one, so, they should be getting that all finished up, uh, this week, and then, uh, and, and, and buttoned up from, I guess, from Fourteenth to twelfth, I should say. And then, uh, the only other update is, is, uh, if you notice, we did finish up that boat ramp on Sixteenth Avenue South, uh, pretty good project for the guys, uh, a lot of hard work, and one of that, uh, parks, uh, helped out on the very large pour that we had, it was about fifty yards, the big stretch that you did there, so, uh, it turned out real good, uh, just in time for them to get their dock pulled out, so, um, other than that, just fall maintenance, we're trying to keep the sweepers going as best we can, we had one break down there for a few days, so, uh, we'll have that back out hopefully tomorrow, and then, uh, yeah, that's about it.
I was just gonna mention, Jeremy, the banners, uh, beginning the rest of the banners up, uh, on Main.
Yeah, so, I picked up some copies of, there's some different banners today, I think we're gonna wait until the mulching's done, and then we'll, uh, that way, we're not impacting each other, and then we'll get them up, um, what was there, yeah, about it, so.
Any other comments, questions for Jeremy, Council? Thanks, Jeremy, appreciate it, good, good to hear the news on Main Avenue, that's very good. Mayor's Report, Chad, North Iowa Corridor, welcome again.
Mayor, Council, appreciate, uh, the time here, uh, just a few things, uh, last week we had the opportunity to, uh, go down to the Technology Association of Iowa's annual event, and called the Prometheus Awards, really a big, cool, uh, showing of Iowa's tech community, a couple of our local businesses were up for awards, including Kingman Systems was up for Technology Community, or Techna, I'll get to that one, uh, Technology Company of the Year, unfortunately did not receive that, uh, Stellar Industries was also up for Manufacturing Technology Company of the Year, they didn't win either, and we were up, actually up as North Iowa for Community of the Year, which was a really cool honor is to be a finalist for that, West Des Moines ended up winning that one, uh, but it's pretty cool to be in the same, uh, league or considered in that grouping with them, Cedar Valley was one of the finalists, um, gosh, Dallas County, and I forget, there's one, one other one, um, but no, really cool recognition, really great organization, and they do, um, they just put on a show, I mean, it's like the Emmys of Iowa kind of thing, I mean, just a big, big production, a lot of cool businesses there, you've got, you know, your Microsofts and, uh, anything from that size, you know, Fortune ten companies, all the way down to the startup tech communities, and, uh, just a, a neat thing to be a part of, so I had a good group down there, had a table of us, uh, representing North Iowa. A few things that organizationally, as I've noted before, we are working through some, uh, open positions with the corridor, uh, we have a partnership, uh, workforce specialist position with NIAC, uh, we've got that working through the HR system of NIAC right now, and hope to have that posted very soon, if you have any good candidates for us, please throw them our way, uh, very important for us to continue to have a person leading the charge in that workforce situation, and really looking forward and appreciate NIAC's willingness to team up with us on that, uh, they obviously have a lot of good resources in that, I think the more that we can have what we're doing, uh, connected to what they're doing, the better that's gonna be for us moving forward, gonna, again, really drive our school efforts and, uh, things that we're doing in the K through twelve system. Uh, also, working on our marketing campaign, uh, marketing position, uh, Joyce Martin, who we've been sharing with NIAC, is going, going back full-time with, uh, the Papa John Center, and that'll allow us to kind of bring on more full-time marketing person, uh, and we also actually, uh, are working with the, the Mason City Chamber, our landlords, on kind of an administrative, uh, position that, that they've hired recently, and we'll be able to take a few hours from that person and, and do some of our administrative tasks and office management kind of things, so, a lot of things in, in the works on that front, uh, for the organization, but, uh, moving in a positive direction there, to get back to full staffing. Um, the countywide comprehensive plan, uh, that we continue to work through, uh, has had great progress, last week we had several Mason City, uh, focus group sessions, this week there's several Clear Lake focus groups, actually on Wednesday, uh, I think we have some business developers, realtors, a few others involved in that process this week, like the schools, uh, and, and others, so I think there's at least three or four focus groups on Wednesday, uh, and those will continue to work here over the next month or two, and then in December, actually, December seventh, uh, we'll have a Clear Lake Public, uh, Open House, I guess we should call it, uh, at the serve from five to seven, and that's gonna be an opportunity for anyone that's interested in the community, we'll be advertising this and putting out a lot of things, uh, with RDG, uh, to get the word out about that, but gonna, kind of have an opportunity for kind of come and go, where you'll be able to see some of the materials and, and make comments and provide input, uh, but also have a more dedicated kind of, uh, session where the, we'll do a little presentation, discuss what the program is and what we're trying to do, again, put people through a little bit of a workshop and, uh, help, try, try to give as much input in that process as we can for Plan for the Future, uh, and then the next night, uh, over at Mason City, there will be one also, and, and that's gonna be open to the countywide, uh, whatever night works for people, but of course, it'll be more of a Clear Lake focus over here, and more of a Mason City focus over there, but it's also open to the, to the county, uh, folks. So that's gonna, again, gonna continue to work through here, what, the next nine months or so, I think, Scott, so, uh, a lot of things in the works on that front. Continue to see positive project activity, we actually had a, a lead from IEDA this, about two weeks ago, where they gave us a couple of days to turn in for it, uh, they actually requested that we submit for it, it was a project that, uh, originally only had a few sites in mind, but the state came back and said, hey, this, this, uh, Mason City certified site would be a good fit for it, so we actually have a site visit this coming week, uh, for that project, uh, would be a large hundred, some million dollar project, looking for a hundred acres, and again, they, they needed a certified site, and, and ours fit a lot of their needs, so, we'll be hosting them, really a cool opportunity, uh, it's an international, um, site consultant that's leading the charge, so anytime you can get them in your community, it's a really good thing for us, and, obviously, hopefully, we, we show well for this project, but, uh, at the very least, it's, it, it's an opportunity, and it was nice that the state, uh, really recommended us for this project, uh, when technically we're a little bit smaller area than they were looking for initially, so. Um, continue to see great things in housing, again, congrats on the, the ongoing Lake Time project that, that was approved tonight, uh, for some, some more elements, we had the groundbreaking for the River Two here a week or two ago, uh, so the new apartments downtown Mason City, uh, also serving on the Cerro Gordo County Public Health Housing Committee, and, and did a really good planning session led up by some young Florrie kid that just moved in, into a new house in the community, uh, but doing a good, good job over there, and, and I think there's gonna be some cool partnership opportunities to get public health, uh, involved in that process, and with our comprehensive planning effort, uh, trying to keep those things coordinated, so that we're not having a bunch of different groups trying to mess with housing, I think we can coordinate and get some good things, and the neat thing with that group is they have a really different perspective on it than maybe we do, working with the businesses, they're working with folks that, uh, might have some different needs than we maybe always see, so, trying to get, again, a more comprehensive look at that issue. Uh, then just a few things coming up, I'll be speaking to the Lake Leadership Group, uh, here in, uh, a week or two on their, uh, Economic Development, uh, Day, so looking forward to that. Uh, we have our investor forum coming up November eighteenth over at the Clear Lake Wellness Center, that'll be at seven-thirty in the morning, uh, we'll be sending out, uh, invites for that, if you haven't seen it already, actually, it should've went out today, so hopefully you saw it, um, but that, again, is at seven-thirty over at the Wellness Center on the eighteenth, and then Vision North Iowa, we're looking at doing our annual State of North Iowa event on January nineteenth this year, so, uh, really gonna try to highlight, we're hoping we'll have really good news on the Destination Iowa project for Clear Lake by then, as well as, obviously, the Mason City ones, we wanna highlight those, as well as the other cool amenity projects that have been going on in the community, really gonna try to have a North Iowa focus on it this year, and there's been a lot of good news and a lot of good things, so, uh, we'll get more information out for that as soon as it comes together.
Questions for, thanks, Chad. Under Mayor's Report, uh, I'll keep in mind that, uh, I believe it's Friday is Veterans Day, as you know, I'll jump ahead of Mr. Callen in here a little bit, and Veterans Day at one time was called Armistice Day in nineteen fifty-four, it was changed, and as we all know, it was on the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month, at the end of World War Two, when Germany surrendered, and we still honor that, uh, this day, and we call it Veterans Day, honoring all veterans, I do believe the school will probably have a program, uh, Friday morning that you might want to attend, but, uh, let's recognize all of our veterans when they see them, uh, this week. Uh, the Wellness Center, uh, I think you need to compliment, uh, if you see them, Adam and Mary Jo, that Halloween party was par excellence, they had, I don't know how many people there, and kids, you know, parents and kids, and, uh, you know, well-attended, everybody had fun, and, yeah, in mornings when, a few mornings a week, when I'm there, that, that's the buzz of people, so, uh, well done, if you see them, uh, thank them for that. Speaking of the Wellness Center, uh, Adam just gave me this late this afternoon, they've had eighty contacts for contracts since the first of October, which gives them a total of, in, in his numbers, seven hundred and fifteen active contracts now, which amounts to one thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight active members are now belonging to that Wellness Center, you can't say that wasn't needed, it sure is being well, well-used, and, uh, that, that's just great news. I, I, the other day, Jim Jackson came in my off, Jim, our park director, came in and sat down and said, hey, is there anything that you need me to do, or any comments that you have for, I've never had a park director come in and say, you know, give, give me, uh, some things that you need done, or what else do you need done, or how am I doing? And I think when you see, um, uh, both he and, uh, let's see, assistants first.
Seth.
Seth, you know, give them compliments, they are working very, very well with, uh, our great Public Works Group, you know, all summer long, look at our police department, look at our, our water staff people and what they've done this summer, now, unfortunately, when we're coming to this, I guess it's not unfortunate, depends whether you like cold weather or not, but we're gonna get some cold weather here coming shortly, you know, compliment these people for what they have done through these, uh, through these times, it's been very, very interesting to hear, we're progressing on the inclusive park and playground, uh, give Nikki Page, uh, some kudos, too, I believe you can see her Wednesday, is she having some little tea and crumpets there sometime, and you might, that's her last day here, and she's going with the, I believe, the Iowa State Patrol, is that right? But she's served us very, very well for, what is it, fifteen years, somewhere in there, is that what you said? Real done. And least we not forget, least we not forget, the Rotary Club Citizen of the Year is Mr. Scott Lawrence Florrie. Well, well done.
Thank you, thank you.
November seventeenth, at noon, at the Legacy Restaurant, he will be honored with this award, so, if you can get there, uh, please do, but congratulations, and well, well, well-deserved. Now, your report, do you have anything?
I'll, I'll keep it brief, but, uh, you know, the, the honor is not mine alone, I, I share it with this entire group, uh, you've been amazing to me for my twenty-two years that I've been here, and our staff, and, you know, it's a recognition, to me, it's a recognition of the city and all the good things that we're doing, none of which are possible without your leadership and your guidance, your vision, your stewardship, so, I'm eternally grateful, humble, and, and blessed to have the, the chances that I've had here, uh, in the community, so, thank you, and I hope, I hope you can all make it mean a lot to me, so. Uh, just a couple of things, uh, the Woodford Wheeler Property Visioning Process is gonna be kicking off here later on this month, so excited to kind of get that, that going, and make a nice project for us over the winter, to kind of go through that process like we did with the Everybody Plays Playground project, uh, there. Uh, I just wanna echo Chad's comments on the Prometheus Award, I got to go with Chad down for that, and it's amazing the number of technology businesses in the state of Iowa, I, I, I think it's kind of, you know, just out of mind, uh, you don't really think about, you think so much about Silicon Valley, California, Austin, Texas, all these, um, centers for technology, but Iowa is clearly a leader in technology, and has come so, so far in, in maybe twenty years, and I was happy to be able to converse with, uh, some of our technology business partners in our community in North Iowa that were at that, uh, that award ceremony, but I'm gonna guess there were eight hundred and fifty to a thousand people there, uh, you know, so it was a great event, uh, I did make Chad stop, uh, ten o'clock on the way back at, uh, Story City to pick up some Quick Star chicken, 'cause it, the meal just didn't quite hold me over, so I had, had to get that, uh, sadly, if two pieces up to five dollars now with the economy, so.
Three tires on the road.
Yeah. Uh, and then just, uh, again, a reminder, uh, to vote tomorrow, I mean, it's an important day, I'm wearing the sweater, I'm probably gonna wear it again tomorrow, uh, so, I've got my voting watch on as well, red, white, and blue, so, so everyone knows that, but, uh, and then last but not least, I wanna thank Bennett for helping me out over the weekend at the Yardway site, uh, worked at both Saturday and Sunday, and, you know, I think, uh, there were a few moments where probably some cars came in that, uh, weren't interested in dropping off any yardways, but we were, we were, um, ready to deal with that, and they came, they left, and didn't drop off anything or take anything, so, that was successful, but we're now, uh, now staffing that, uh, Monday from, um, three-thirty to seven, and Wednesday, uh, again, till seven PM, and then Saturdays from nine to one, is it, yeah, Jeremy, so, so thanks to Jeremy for coordinating that, and, uh, it's, uh, you know, we, we enjoy being able to offer that, and it was a great opportunity for Bennett and I to kind of talk to some of the citizens as they came out there, I think a lot of folks don't really understand, uh, how really understand, uh, how the recycling system works or the composting and yard waste work, and so we got a chance to kind of tell them a little about it and appreciate their cooperation and doing what we can to keep that open, so, thank you.
Questions, Council? Anything else, Council?